A credit union is run by volunteers. We have a volunteer board of directors where a bank has cooperators and trustees. If you have a $5 member account, then you are basically an owner of the credit union. You have a right to vote at meetings and so on and so forth. Whereas a bank, you're just a customer. So you actually take ownership of the credit union by becoming a member of the credit union.
Good evening. Welcome to the select board meeting on Monday, May 19th, 2014. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Mr. Fritz on the election. Congratulations to you, Chris. As you all know, we usually reorganize at this point.
It's actually, Mr. Chairman, it's on the first, it's on the, at the first business meeting. So today we run normally with normal officers. Next business meeting is a week, actually it's the...
Two weeks.
No, it's a week from Wednesday because Monday's a holiday.
Oh, that's right.
So I believe the date is the 28th. So May 28th, first business meeting of order will be, a reorganization will be the first thing after opening and doing the pledge of allegiance.
Good, I get another night.
Enjoy.
There you go.
It's not fun. Okay, first item, Chapter 61A, Section 14, vote exercise, I write a first refusal on 26.49 acre parcel. It's map 23 parcel 41. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, I am...
So just for Mr. Chris, Chris's benefit and also for anyone watching. At any point in time, the property owner seeks to change the use of a property that's classified as Chapter 61. There's 61, I'm sorry, 61, 61A and 61B are all three statutes that allow you for essentially a revised tax assessment if you commit to locking it up under this program. Basically, open space, you maintain it in this particular use at any certain time that you go to propose to change the use. The town, in exchange for you having a tax break, essentially, the town has the first right of refusal at any time you go to sell that property for change of use. So in this case, Mr. Moschini and Mrs. Moschini are looking to sell a portion of property that they own to change the use from agricultural to a solar panel farm that's being proposed, okay? So you have a copy of the purchase and sale agreement, you've got a copy of the land, plan. Just also to let you know that we also usually take feedback from Conservation Commission or Planning Board. I did receive an email today from the Conservation Commission stating that they do not object them selling the property for this use. So essentially what happens is the town would have 120 days to act upon the date of receiving this documentation, at which time we could hold a special town meeting, we could appropriate funds for the purchase and match what's in the purchase and sale agreement. So Conservation Commission says they have no objection to let it go. I'm not recommending that the selectmen take that action. And then based on that, my recommendation would be the same to the selectmen is that you would vote to not exercise your first right of refusal and let the Moschinis move forward with their sale.
Bob, do you want to come up in case there's any questions? We like you in the front, anyway. There you go.
So again, in your packet, you have a copy of the cover letter from Mr. Stotter, the attorney of record. Second part of the packet is the plan, two-sided plan, and then the purchase and sale agreement. Do you want to talk about what the remaining land is and what your plans are for the remaining land that you have now? Because you're only, you're breaking up a piece of it.
Right. We don't plan on selling any other land. We could have leased this land for a solar farm, but my attorney as well as our son felt it was better just to sell it. I have since purchased 24 acres to compensate for the sale of this land. So we still own roughly 345 acres and we don't plan to sell anymore.
Any questions from the board?
Unfortunately, well, at least the one good thing is it's not going for development and, you know, at the end of the 20 years, they could put it right back into agriculture. Because they're only going to probably drill posts in the ground. And I don't think they're going to disturb the topsoil or the, you know, the grass or hay that's on it, the sod that's on it. As my understanding, they'll auger in post. So that'll be great for erosion control. We still plan to, not all of it will be in a solar farm. So what they don't use for solar, you know, they may only use like 15 acres for solar. So we have the right to hang the rest of the land and maintain it that way. Any other questions?
Now, Bob, is this the land that goes down to behind Fish and Game, that big hill on that side?
Right.
It goes down to the power lines where the gas company is on almost the valley here, right?
Not quite that far.
Yeah, it goes due west, up over the hill and down, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It goes back, what, back to Dufo's?
Yep.
Road roughly? The old Dufo farm?
No, it goes towards the walking trail.
Or it goes back down towards the, okay.
Right, right. It's a long hour field, it's up over the hill and towards the walking trail.
Yeah, the question?
Just to the chairman, Mr. Moschini, now is this, you said you bought some additional land? Did you find contiguous land or?
Yes, yes.
You had to make up for the loss of the hayfield or?
Right, it's wooded, so over time we could put it into production. Well, that's the reason why, to make up for it. The land was, it was, the land was landlocked and we owned the land around it and just William Dufo wanted to sell it, so we were able to buy it. Yeah.
Do you know if the solar panels and all, is it, you said they may not use the whole thing. Are they starting from the back and moving toward the road or will it all be visible from the road?
I don't think very much will be visible from the road. But, you know, you can't quote me on that because I'm not, I can't guarantee that. I think most will be facing south. I don't know if that's going to be the rotating type or not. Haven't told you much on that.
The road would be, able to see if it would be the Fish and Game. The rest of it is down on the hill on the other side and you've got the O'Gara Park on the lower side, so you know where the roads are down there.
As we own all the land south of there, that's where you'll be able to see from.
I see, got you.
You will be able to see somewhere close, you know, over the crest of the hill where it faces the Fish and Game. If you look going down 31, I'm sure if you looked, you're going up 31 towards down and look to the left, you'd probably see the panels, some of the panels, but not very much of it. Which is a good thing because most of it will be, you know, away from any neighbors or view of most people, from what I know.
Yeah, between that and unless you're up on Pleasant, you're not going to see it. Anything else from the board? Want to entertain?
At least the money that will be, you know, derived from the sale of this will help to keep the farm viable for generations through the count. We hate to lose the farm land, but, you know, for the kind of money, you know, my son has taken over our farm and running the business and hopefully someday his children will do the same. So all this will help, you know, reduce debt and purchase the kind of equipment we need to, or build buildings or whatever, market compost or whatever to, you know, maintain the viability of the farm in the future. They don't have a plan to develop it, at least not in my lifetime. I can't guarantee you that, but, you know.
Mr. Stotter, did you have a question?
Please. Hi, Bob, Steve Stotter back here.
Hi, Steve.
Hi, I haven't seen your plan. Is that part, is that associated with the area where the community barney dismoned from you or?
No, no, it's due west of there. You know, it's on the, it's, if you went down the end of Mechanic Street?
Yeah.
And if you went in the Fish and Game that way, it'd be west of that.
Okay, I'm going to talk to him.
West of the pond, yeah.
Good, I was kind of worried that I spent two years trying to get that back from that C O T.
No.
And it was like way too late.
No, no. No, no, no.
Okay. We'll talk to you later this summer.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a question for Adam.
Yep.
Adam, this is a sale, correct?
Yep.
So at the end of 20 years, does, what happens at the end of 20 years in terms of what use might follow?
Well, again, it's going to be, it's going to be different hands.
Yes.
Okay, so they could actually sell the property a year into it, two years into it, five years in it, 30 years in it, you know. What, the 20-year timeframe that's being discussed is typically, that's typically the period of term that a solar panel farm would lease it from a property owner. They do them in 20-year increments because, the reason for that is because the tax credits are over 20 years, okay? So at the end of the tax credit period, if they're not making any money more, if they're not making money anymore, you know, at any point in that time, if they're not making the money that they thought they would be making or whatever, or this project may never even get built.
Right.
Okay, this was a lot of different things that could happen here, so, you know, it's hard, hard to answer the question. You know, at the end of 20 years, they could have sold it three different times by then, you know. It's hard to forecast what could happen. Again, a lot of these things, probably 10 of them and only two, only one's been built, actually. So it's, we'll have to wait and see.
And other uses would come back before the appropriate boards and commissions?
No.
Well, it depends. So, so in terms of, if the proposed, proposal to move forward to the solar panel farm continues, they will have to go through the planning board for site plan review and there'll be a review, you know, building permits and if there's any work being done within 100 foot of a wetland, there'll have to be Conservation Commission reviews. So there'll be an opportunity for the towns board to review that. If they decide not to do that and, you know, and it does not go back into agricultural, they go, they could, you know, whatever the zoning would allow, based on however they get their frontage or propose a roadway, propose access, you know, they could, could do other uses there other than a solar panel farm.
Just to clarify, nothing, it's my vote here on our option.
That being said?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to waive or accept a right of first refusal for the 26.49 acre parcel, ID map 23 parcel 41.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You all set, Bob?
Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing us to do this.
Good luck to the farm. Keep it going.
Okay, we have a public hearing for Class 2 Auto Dealers License. We'll open up the public hearing at 6:18 if that clock's right. Harvey, you want to come up?
Yep, so in your packet, you have some information that Brenda put together for you through Harvey. You have an application for Class 2 license. You also have section, chapter 140, section 58. And then you have the plan of the Ragsdale property showing the existing buildings being proposed. Mr. Shine is proposing his use on building number 322, 322 Main Street. Harvey Shine doing business is a small, small car clinic. So maybe Harvey, if you could just tell us how you are operating currently in town. I know you have another, you know, we have another facility at 16 Main that you previously were using and then what the plans are for this site and exactly what you're looking to do.
Well, I run a repair business, that's my primary business. Use cars is secondary business. I exercise the license, I don't, it's not a lot of cars, but a few cars. I've moved the repair facility up there and George doesn't want to exercise the license anymore. He gave me a copy of it and said, you know, have to it, you know, we had to transfer. He didn't know what the process was, obviously. And I'm not going to be able to exercise the license at 116, I'm not going to be there, so I apply for the license up here. It is, I don't, it's a hundred car license and I actually don't need that. I can't afford that many cars anyways, but that's what the license was, so I didn't, you know. Just kind of crazy, might say.
So basically, you're looking to relocate your license or relocate your operations. Your whole business, that was the 16 Main, move it up to this facility, 322. The repair is already there now.
Right.
It was previously used as a?
Repair garage.
Repair and sales dealership.
Because everything that I want to use it for has been in the past.
Correct.
And it's licensed for today. I just kind of need to transfer it.
Now Harvey, does that include the lot in front of it?
Yeah.
Right up to the street?
Well, he told me I could use the whole lot out to the, to the street. Unless he rents the front of the building or somebody else that needs some of it.
Oh, so you're only renting the back half of that building?
No, in the middle of it. Actually, there's a small business in the back, Telegram Gazette.
They're still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm renting probably the major part of the building.
Major part, yeah.
But it's not the front or the back, it's right in the middle.
Right, yeah, so where they actually, the bay, big bay was.
Right, exactly, yeah. It's huge, it's, you know, over 7,000 square feet. And I have the park in front of it and behind it and he's allowing me the front.
Okay.
Until the day he may rent the business out front and then I'm.
Or if he was to sell the dealership next door.
Yeah. Well, that's a different, you know, the deal, that's, he's got the property divided.
That's two different, that's two different properties.
Three different.
Yeah, look at the, look at the plan, you can see 320 right now, is in the middle.
It used to be all one lot, that's why.
Right, 320.
Yeah, he's divided it down, it's 3.2 acres.
Okay.
Is what it sits on. It's kind of like, it's kind of funny slice, but it's right down the middle.
Exactly. So if you could look from the, the plan, he's, he's, right now he's in the middle, 322.
Right.
He's talking about potentially using the front part as well.
Right.
Until such time that George wants to give that up, Mike wants to give that up. And then he has the area in the front and the area in the back.
And to the side.
And to the side.
And to the east side. Right, the east side might park it basically for customers.
Right.
The front I would display use cars. I generally have five to 15 cars, you know, so it's not a large amount. I'll probably try to grow that a little bit, you know. Certainly not going to grow it to 100.
You're still going to use the ones down at 16 Main Street?
For now.
For now?
Yeah. I'd like to, you know, that may get sold to put a down payment to buy, I'd like to buy this place.
I know you still got some cars down there, so I was.
Yeah, I have a license, yeah.
That's a separate license, I think, for 12 cars or whatever it was at that time.
14 maybe. 13.
Yes, it wasn't very many, yeah.
Yeah. Now I have main, you know, I've always been kind of in the back, so I didn't have any.
Right, you always underneath the garage.
Right, I didn't have a display, that's why I had 16 Main. But now I have a display, so 16 Main will kind of turn to dust for a while, I don't know.
So how many car license are you looking for here, Harvey?
I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't specify anything. I don't need 100 though, I can tell you that.
Well, because I think George's license and, and maybe you can correct me, Brenda, included 322 and 324 for a hundred car license.
100's a little excess, I don't need 100.
Well, I think what Gary's going is that we need to do something with 324 in terms of amending that license.
It was two addresses.
Correct.
Yeah, right, it's been divided, he probably had a license.
Well, it's divided in terms of the property lines divided and he's got separate tax map lot numbers here, but in terms of the license that.
The license is held on both properties, which.
But if he doesn't, what, did he renew, is it renewed, it's active?
Yeah, it became renewed last time we went through this.
Okay, but now it isn't, so we would have to.
So I need to make sure that we're not doubling up.
Right.
I, like I said, I don't need 100 cars.
Well, I think Gary's concerned is, let's say we give you 15 or 20. And then does he still have a license now for 100 or only 80?
No, he's, yeah, right, that's my problem.
Yeah, right, you got it.
So.
Is you holding two licenses on the same piece of property where his other one was?
No, he doesn't need the license anymore, he doesn't want the license.
But we need him to send us a letter saying that he no longer.
So I think what we would do is if you were to vote tonight to issue this, you would set a certain number of.
What you think you need?
Of your units, right?
Right now, I need 15, but I would say I'd have to go for a license on 30 anyway.
I was just going to say.
Like, oh, I don't want to.
In order to make.
I think we would do, you make a vote contingent upon.
In order to make that look good, you got to be there.
I'm sorry?
That's a number if you just want to make that space look good.
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't, I don't either, not at all.
So you would make a vote, continue, vote issuing a license here for 322 to Shine.
Subject to.
For 30 units contingent upon receiving a letter from Ragsdale that he's reducing his license from 100 to 70 through the end of this year.
No, he had to change his license because it couldn't be on 322 and 324. So you're carrying a license on both. So my gut tells me it being an inoperable license for the last two years, just being attached to the property. Now we have another used car. You know, I know he, most of his work is repairs, but now you're going to end up with another license there and there'd be nothing stopping George from coming back and putting 80 cars there.
So. I'm not on 324, right? So you, what you want is you want, let's say.
He's got to either amend his license.
Correct.
And shift whatever that number is and he'd have to get it approved.
324 only.
But it wouldn't be 80 cars, is what I'm saying. It would be whatever number it is.
Whatever it applies to.
Right. And then we decide at that point, but.
Okay, so would you want, are you going to wait to act on that until you receive a letter from Ragsdale or are you going to issue this license here?
Well, I think we need to know what the. I mean, you know, I don't have a problem, you know, subject to, but we need to know the intent of the property owner because he is a trustee of what his intent is.
Because you're only renting, you're not even.
I mean, he hasn't used it in two years, my gut tells me he's probably not going. But that's not the choice for me to make. He did, he did renew the license, so.
I could have him send you, you know, I'm sure he'll send you a letter or whatever.
Something like that, yeah.
Just you have to tell me what you want, I will.
I guess.
I think what we'd like is a letter regarding his license saying that he forgoes the use of it on 322 and he would like to shift a certain portion of units to 324.
Or not.
Which is the balance of whatever you're getting on 322. So if you want 30, then he should send us a letter saying, I want 70 on lot 324 and I forego my 30.
I'd kind of ask him what he wants, but.
He can contact me through Brenda and myself, he can contact me if you two want to, if you want to come in together, we can talk about it, but any issuance of a license will be subject to that.
Right, because, because.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because when you take that property.
Process, again, he's not even exercising.
Which, which is why I think he just soon, you know, because when you get down to the storage, you had the dirt pit down below, that's now a repo yet or some, somebody in there.
Yeah, so I think what we just, once you get the letter, I put it on the agenda, the next available, first available agenda and have you guys vote to amend the old license.
Right.
So this one would be contingent upon the amendment of the old license.
Right.
That was my question, we need to deal with this in another meeting that we can.
Right.
Okay. Well, you could, you know, start the process, just, so you don't have to come back and vote on this one at all. You just vote this one contingent upon that process being completed. And when you come back, you just vote on that.
Well, at that point, any questions from the board other than what we asked?
Just for the public and for the geographically challenged, is that the brick, the brick building is a facade for?
Yeah, right, brick with a lot of wood in the front.
Right.
The old, the old milkroom, Toby.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, that's what it's.
See, where you are.
Just behind that.
Where you are is.
Just behind.
I'm trying to think of when we changed that building, but you're from where the service door was.
Right.
There was a service and paths area up there.
Right, I have that, when you walk in that door.
Where the bathrooms are and then the office and then the back.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only I don't have is a little chunk they took out for the T and G.
Right, which is in the back corner, I think.
Right, and they don't interrupt, they, they're only there when I'm not.
Okay.
That one's all kind of good.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, another comment I'd make, and this is nothing towards this license, but was there a issue with spills at one of these properties? And if there was, is this, is this property not part of that?
There was, there was a DEP issuance, I think it was on the neighboring lot.
It was that.
In the back and it's, you know, they, anytime there's a spill, the town's not even involved. It's mass DEP, it's involved. They come up with a mediation plan and then it eventually gets phased out depending on what kind of work.
It's got a new, dangerous kind of thing for.
They bring it up just to protect you and protect the town.
Oh, yeah, I love to do that.
So, okay, so that's the thing we need to worry about or the applicant.
I'm sure his attorney in terms of negotiating all the, all the lease and all that, just making sure that he's not liable for previous.
Right.
But that's between the private parties. And if there's anything that's left in terms of remediation required, it's strictly DEP, town's not even involved.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just wondered about the significance of the 100 for, for the entire parcel. Was that a limit that was set some time ago? Could Mr. Ragsdale come back and say he still wants to keep a, keep 100 and but still can do, but, but still do 30 where, where Mr. Shine?
Well, I think that's my, that's my problem is you don't want to carry two used car licenses on this piece.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but when you get to the front of the, what used to be the Chevy store, you do have a display up the road and down the side. So, I mean, theoretically, he could still utilize that.
So technically, he could ask for, keep the 100.
Amendment.
And just ask for it to be just on 324.
Right. And then come back and try to amend the license, which would come back and, but.
The number one issue is that we can't have two licenses on the same property. However, Mr. Ragsdale decides to.
His license is issued to both those properties and 24.
Right, now he's got an active license for both those properties.
For both, that's why.
100 is for both lots.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be hard to press to get 100, right, but it was real hard pressed.
I don't know, I used to put it for 70 in that.
I was just going to say, we, it used to be about 60 or 70 out there in that front.
Really?
Yeah. Well, you pack them like side hips.
Maybe I should take like 35 because that would be.
Well, yeah, you have to.
I'll see what he says, I'll ask him.
Talk to him, Harvey, we'll.
Because he's real easy to get.
It is open for a public meeting, so if the board's all set, is there anybody from the public like to be heard? Seeing none? Any other question from the board?
The question, does, what does, what does an approval contingent upon the, the change in the existing license do for Mr. Shine at this point?
Means he doesn't have to come back to the next meeting. Means he can walk away right now knowing, as long as there's a letter that comes from Ragsdale, getting the license split up into two, he doesn't have to come back to the next meeting. You know, he can, he's, you know, so at the next, next available meeting that we'd have, we'd have a letter from Mr. Ragsdale saying, please amend my license, remove 322 from my existing license. You guys vote to amend the Ragsdale license and then he can move forward.
Okay, so I have to have him remove 322 for his license?
Correct.
And state the amount of cars he wants to keep?
Correct.
And I have the balance, okay.
Correct.
And he just has to send it to the?
I'll send it to Brenda or myself.
To Brenda? Well, I can hand carry it.
Yeah, go through Brenda, yeah, if you want to hand carry it to Brenda, then I'll, I'll follow.
Yeah, I'm just up the street all the time.
Harvey, in that agreement, I just have one more question. Let me just see. They've spent 30 years there and I can remember is 322, if you look at, see the automobile storage area? Is that part of your lease?
I don't know what Terry.
That's the very front part of a lot of part of the road.
Wait, you know where you changed the old P S sign and now has your sign there?
Right, no, that's not actually part of my lease, no. No, I'm allowed to use it.
See, that's the problem I have because.
I'm allowed, I'm allowed to use it in the back, on the side here and part of the front here, but not the whole thing, you know. He said, well, he'll let me use it now, but he said if they rent the front, then they're going to, it's going to be a, you know, a shared, a shared area.
But they can't have another license?
You can't, here is. There's not going to be another used car place anyways.
Something, another use besides used car.
Right, yeah, exactly. In fact, there's somebody looking to do hairdressing in there, so they're not going to, you know.
So they might want to use it through those spaces for parking for the front use.
Exactly, then I would have to give it.
Which is fine, as long as that, because that's a separate piece, whereas I looked through this and it always has been, is technically, Harvey could put the cars out front and then he rents the front and he moves them forward, but George could say, well, wait a minute, I want to, this is not part of your lease, I want to use that as my used car storage. It's. It's, it's.
Well, he won't have a license for that.
Right, so.
He wouldn't have a license for that.
Well, because I'm not sure that lot is not.
Huh? So. It's all part of the lot, it's all part of the, it's part of that property for three twenty-two.
Then I don't have a problem.
What you're seeing here is a dashed line, it's not a record deed, not on a plan, it's just shown as previously used, that was, you know, that type, type of use.
That's fine.
But they could change that, and they could put all those storage in the back, on the side, part of that front, and they could put, you know, like I said, they have a hairdresser in the front.
Then they need parking.
Ten parking spaces in that part that's labeled.
And shift forward or whatever.
This is just an old plan that separated the lots.
Right, okay.
So we end up issuing a, a license for, for selling cars on, on a piece of property that Mr. Shine is now officially renting? That's.
He doesn't, he doesn't own.
I'm technically yes.
But that's only because the front isn't occupied right now.
Right.
Okay.
It's three twenty-two is part of it, you know, is what I'm.
He's gonna start off his lease, that he's gonna be able to put the cars, I don't even know that lot. Three twenty-two is owned by Mr. Ragsdale, he's gonna lease the property, he's gonna use the, the, the building, portions out of designated that he's using now. And with the opportunity possible, use the front, maintain that until someone else comes in there, and he can move the cars all around that property.
So that's between him and Mr. Ragsdale.
Between his lease, between him and Mr. Ragsdale, he may have to move cars out of that front area.
Well, he might be, he might be up toward the street, and you may need ten parking spaces for the front of that building.
Parking for that proposition.
Which is the way it used to be years ago.
Yeah, right there.
And we agreed to that, even the sign I put up.
Okay.
I put the sign up, and he said, possible somebody leasing the front, and I'll have to remove it. Well, that's the way it is. But I don't think somebody's gonna rush in to lease in the front of the building, I've seen it, so. It's been making for a long time, I don't think it's gonna, you know.
Can we cover that with the verbiage of our motion next time?
We'll cover what?
To avoid, any avoidance of a, of a second application coming in for, you know.
Well, we, we know, we only have cer, we have only so many licenses issued in town, so let's say there's ten of them. If someone comes in and looks for another one, and it's the same property, actually, we're gonna know it, it's not, you know.
So if he's. Javi, when you were, when you were down at the, under Danny, did you ever use car license there or no? So you held two prior to, so that one's going.
I have two licenses, I have one at sixteen and one at one sixteen, one sixteen is at Danny's place. One sixteen is what I use most of the time, it's mostly.
Right, because that's where you were, right.
And I don't need that anymore, cause I'm not there.
So that one's being given up, being shipped to here?
That's given up, yeah, I won't, I won't be renewing that.
I mean, that's.
Well, here's what I'd say, he's got an active license.
Right.
All right, and he's got that to the end of the year, so you don't have to do anything. I mean, if he doesn't use it, he doesn't use it.
Right.
Okay, he's okay to have more than one license in town.
I'd be holding three at that point.
It's not, I mean, it's up to him, that way he has the opportunity to shift around lots, so then when he comes in the fall, he's gonna have to renew this one, okay? So this is, so this is essentially only, this is essentially only a six-month license.
And not renew the other one. Right.
This is essentially only a six-month license, and then the other two, he can just not put an application in for renewal of his, of his licenses on the other two lots.
Right.
And move from there, so I don't even think.
I definitely don't want one sixteen anymore.
I don't think you need to take any action on those.
No, because he's not there anymore, so that's a kind of a mute.
If he wants to use them, great, then he's got three businesses.
Well, one sixteen is separate, that's a location, so he's not at that location, so.
Yeah, well, that's terminated the end of the month, thirty-first.
Right.
The only action that's before you tonight.
Is this one.
If you decide to act tonight, is to issue a license to Mr. Shine on three twenty-two, which he does not currently have for class two. That's the only thing you have to worry about tonight. If you're worried, and you know, as part of that, you're worried about having a second license on there, you need to make this contingent upon.
On the other.
Mr. Ragsdale submitting a letter saying he removes three twenty-two from his license.
Three twenty-two, right.
That way you only have one license for three twenty-two.
Exactly, and that's where I was going with this. That being said, any other questions from the board? At that point, we'll close the public hearing at six thirty-five. And I will entertain.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a class-two auto license for Javi Shine, D B A Small Car Clinic at three twenty-two Main Street. Contingent on a letter from the current class-two license holder of that property. You know, for purposes of rewriting the number of cars to be allowed.
Removing his license.
Removing his license, that portion of the, of the, of property.
Right.
Correct.
One small correction to that, it is Small Car Clinic Inc. on that one.
Small Car Clinic Inc.
No, right, that's what.
We just changed that.
And, and the only thing I will say, because we talked about cars, Javi, would you decide on, is it thirty, thirty-five?
I'll, I'll talk to George, see what he says. Well, we'd like to make it part of the hope.
It's gonna be part of what you're gonna do.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, I'd go for thirty-five, that'll give me a safety.
I mean, if you come back and, and you wanna renew the license in the fall, you're gonna take it for fifty.
I'd change it, put it to thirty, do thirty, we can change it.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I'm not gonna accumulate thirty cars.
In the next six months, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I amend the, I amend the motion to, to include the thirty cars of the property.
Okay. No.
Second.
The motion is second, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Javi, good luck to you up there.
Oh, thank you very much.
I stopped the other day, but Dennis Roy was up there doing some wiring or something.
Looking at a couple. I'll, I'll have George send a letter for you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Timmy did.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, have a good one.
You too.
All right, annual town election follow-up.
Okay, so in your packet, I gave you a couple items, one is the results from the town clerk's office. Which is a printout of all of the write-ins, all of the votes from all the different precincts, precincts and all the different totals. For all the elected positions, and including, on the final page, the three questions, question one, question two, question three. So what I think we'll do is just start with that, any comments or any questions? I know town clerk is here, if you have any questions in terms of how the process went, or you just wanna have some general discussion in terms of the results. And then from there, we can start moving forward with the impacts of the votes in terms of what we need to do for F Y fifteen in terms of a budget and service standpoint. So maybe we'll just start with that, if there's any discussion, anyone wishes that, discuss the actual election or the election results. And open with that.
Okay. Well, I think we all know it was a hard, hard-fought battle. Board, have any questions?
Or other comments, is that?
Yep.
Well.
Whatever.
Well, I guess, I mean, we're, it's a good, it's a good, eventually gonna be a segue into specific line items, specific uses and specific things that we need to discuss, but.
Madam Town Clerk, did you find any questionable ballots that couldn't be particularly towards the questions, or you couldn't make out votes? And, and if they, if they were, were they put into blank status, or?
How does a computer do it?
If a mark is made, yes or no, the machine will read it as a close throw. If it can't be read, the machine kicks it out, and at that point, it would then be put in a side pocket to be hand counted. And as long as the intent of the voter can be understood, in other words, if say someone didn't color in the circle, but they made an X over the circle. Then the intent of the voter would be deter, easily determined, and then it would be counted. But we didn't experience anything unusual.
Thank you.
No hanging chairs.
None. Wrong state.
I have also a question for, for Laura. Laura, in, in general, is, is this a sort of typical number of blanks that are turned in, you know, across the, you know, range of questions and candidates? Does that?
It's hard to say, John. Every election is a little bit different. The voters have the opportunity for, say, for selectmen to vote for two seats. They don't have to vote for two seats, they could say, I know this person, I'm gonna vote for them, but I don't know the others. So. I can't really say if it's an inordinate amount without researching several elections, is he in the.
I was just struck in some category in some of the questions and, and, you know, races, a lot of times of likes, but I'm in a better position myself.
Anything else?
God, he didn't get tree wooden, I'm very upset.
I saw that. Glad he had half a chance.
Boat didn't get parked, commissioning. Somebody wrote you in, park commission. Okay. Seems like everyone's gonna save their discussion for the specifics part of the presentation? So move on?
We will.
Ready? All right, so we now have to go through the process of implementing reductions for February, um, for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, which begins July first. So if you recall, in the warrant, town meeting warrant, there were two different articles, for the town's budget, one which was for eight point three two million. And the other for four hundred and eighty-four thousand, the four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in expenses being continued upon a successful vote at, at an override election. So that override election failed by forty-five votes, I think it was one thousand fifty-one to one thousand and six. So based on that, we're gonna make, we have to, we have no choice, because we don't have additional revenue coming in, the only way to balance the budget is to make expense reductions. So as part of our expense reductions, I have a list of things, and you can see over on the right, the list of, of things that we talked about pre-town meeting. You can see on the left which department, which line item, what the description is, what the proposed amount is, and what I think the actual amount would be. And we can talk about that, that's something I have to clarify with the accountant, if I can even make those changes. For example, you know, the reduction to police, when you look at the actual hourly rate, times the number of hours that person works, when we target a specific position. Over the course of the year, how many hours they work, you know, there's a seven dollar difference. I mean, can I make that adjustment, or, because I'm still gonna stay within the eight point three two million, we're still doing what we said. However, it's, because it's a seven dollar difference, can I do that, or do I have to live with what's on the left, and then maybe at a future town meeting, just, you know.
Just.
Clarify it, so that's something, in terms of a process standpoint, I don't have the exact answer for you, but the intent of everything and the, the actual amount, so the proposed amount, proposed amount is exactly the same. What's being proposed is what is actually gonna happen, okay? So, so I guess I should just go through some of the reductions, and we can talk about, or you guys can ask any questions you want. So the top six items are town hall departments. We talked about if the override failed, we would have to make a reduction in service at the town hall. We talked about closing a day a week and at nights, and by doing that, town hall will be open Monday, uh, three days a week, my proposals for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And then by doing that, the town hall would be closed on that other day, in addition to already being closed on Friday, closed to the public, but the department heads would, would be working that day. Because they're salary people, and they have the ability to work forty hours plus. So the reduction there is a loss of support staff for those departments, unfortunately. That, in essence, those folks will be going from approximately thirty-six hours a week to twenty-seven hours a week. And the proposed amount and the reduction, essentially it's twenty-five percent cut. And you can see where the reductions are in the proposed and the actual amount, the dollar amounts. In addition to that, there, we're eliminating three part-time positions at town hall, one which is vacant, that's the part-time position in the assessors' office. And there are two part-time folks that share a position in the town clerk's office, which are also impacted by this result. So that is the proposal for town hall. In addition, we'd be reducing the building inspector, he's a contract employee, that position is, is, once was a salary position. Since reduced to thirty-two hours, this would reduce it to nineteen point five hours and make it a non-benefit eligible position. Police department, we discussed reducing salaries, the salary line item, which is one one two one oh dash fifty-one thousand. It's a reduction, reduction of ten thousand dollars in overtime, reducing the custodial staff by fifty percent is another six thousand reduction. Fire department, also reducing custodial staff by fifty percent, same thing. Fire department eliminating the training, which was proposed, and you have a letter in your packet from the fire chief, talking about the impacts of the loss of training. Talk about that, if you have any questions, I can follow up with the fire chief. The highway department eliminating that one position. So you can see what I meant, I, you know, I think I carried an even number of thirty-eight thousand on the override, and the actual number's thirty-eight, eight sixty-seven. By eliminating one light equipment operator, we'll be going from ten staff down to nine. Roadway expenses, there's thirteen thousand dollars coming out of the highway expense budget. Which is effect, gonna impact our road program, in which we hire consultants to do survey work, and also could possibly impact our sidewalk construction budget. Board of Health, we're gonna be eliminating the fluoride coordinator, that, in the fluoride coordinator program at the schools. Counts on aging, the Maple Street School, eliminating the expenses for, that we had originally proposed, remember last summer, we talked about, once the school was turned back to us, what we would do. And we, we went through a whole process of what it would cost to me operate that building in terms of utilities and other expenses. So that money's gone, so we'll have to talk about what we're gonna do with Maple Street School, sell it, most likely. The library, we'll be reducing hours from forty to thirty-two, we'll have to apply for a waiver for our certification, which is not very likely. Which also represents a loss of the book budget, loss of expenses, reducing programs, and eliminating seven part-time positions. Parks and Rec, we lost all the salaries associated with the swim program, lifeguards, so we'll have to close town beach. Expenses at the Parks and Rec facilities, and then stipends for all of our board members, you can see on the bottom right, that's the planning board, conservation commission, zoning board, and also our finance committee clerk. So things that we need to do, we're working with accounting department slash H R, working on implementing layoffs. In terms of notices and the implementation of that. We have an unemployment reserve account, which we will be responsible for unemployment for those folks, and we have a reserve account, which that would come out of. Well, I obviously have to change all of our hours on our website, all of our signs. It's gonna impact the building industry, and talked to Mr. Fritz today about how we could possibly structure the hours for the building inspector to try and limit that impact, but that's gonna be, there's gonna be an impact there. The beach, we talked, I've been talking about the park commissioners, also the police chief about the pros and cons of boarding up or gating up the town beach. Right now, we've, we've always kept it open, so the police could just drive through. But I think just to minimize our risk, we're gonna, I think the proposal is gonna be to gate that property, no, no swimming allowed at all. And then the police department, the police officers would have a key that they could drive through there, to make sure they're, they're looking out for vandalism and trespassing. Maple Street School, again, you're gonna have to act on that, we're gonna have to probably, you know, set up a committee, like we did the Sudden Block. Because it's a town building, you have to go through a certain process, you can't just put a for sale sign up on the, on the side of the building and hope for the best offer, you have to go through an R F P process, because it's valued over twenty-five thousand. The library, proposal there is to close on Saturdays and another half-day during the week. Her proposal to me, or I met with her today, was they'd be open ten to seven on Mondays and Wednesdays, and then ten to five on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And any such time that they were below three people, persons on, you know, whatever those, those, if those hours, they didn't have a minimum of three hours at that facility, they'd be closed other times, if necessary. Again, when I, we were looking today at the regulations regarding the loss of, or the waiver that you need to apply for certification, one of the things they look at is whether or not you've decreased the library proportionate with other financial cuts that you've made. The, the library essentially took about twenty-five percent hit. The overall budget impact to our, to overall as a town was, was less than that. So it's gonna be very hard for us to get a certification maintained there, which means that people won't be able to get books at other facilities. So we'll have to renew the lease at the Fish and Game Club for the senior center, that's something I have to work on. That's it, off the top of my head right now, so. Any discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, as far as the, the overtime for police has, has a wide ranging effect as well.
Correct.
And on the parades that, that we have for the town, do we flip the bill for any of them, or do, do, like, the V F W pay for the detail?
No, no, our police overtime budget, there's a line item in there for all events and parades, and so anything to do with, you know, extracurricular stuff, the, the parades, Memorial Day, Veterans Day parade. Christmas parade.
Little League.
Little League, you know, those types of things that we've, we've carried, what was it, ten thousand dollar item for that. Things like the Spencer Fair, I believe they pay.
They do.
So that would be impacted, but all the other extracurricular stuff, that's outside of that. We do not have that in our budget anymore.
I, I think we should be prepared, Mr. Chairman, to write a letter to number one, the celebration committee regarding Halloween.
Christmas parade.
Family Fun Day next year, to the Little League, to the V F W, saying, you know, because of whatever.
They all have to pay themselves, because we don't have money in the budget.
Or if they wanna have the parade, they gotta pay for the.
Right, or, right, and for our stuff, we, we have to get, you know, private donations or something.
Right, that, that was part of my conversation with the administrator today, is that we need to send a letter, make sure that everybody's aware of what the impact is.
Does that mean that ten thousand, Mr. Chair, is, is, that ten thousand overtime issue is, accounts for all the, the, the events and parades? So it sounds as if there's some, some beyond that in, in the budget, that's, that's the, that's the overtime.
Correct, we have, so, if you recall, the police overtime budget, he had overtime for different things, shift coverage, vacations, holiday pay, et cetera, events. So if you were to fund anything out of that ten thousand, you're impacting all of the other things, and all the other things are essential to maintaining the minimum staff levels. In terms of coverage, making sure you have, you know, two officers on at a time, busy times you have three, and those things. So if you start targeting those other line items, you, you, you're impacting services in a different way. So I think your question essentially is, is there only six thousand, or at least four thousand?
Or I don't know, if ten thousand was the total, if it was, if it was twelve, or if it was fifteen, and so we only have two.
Well, he carries ten, and like, again, in one year, it could be nine, and another year it could be eleven, it could be eight, it could be ten, you know, seventy-nine hundred, whatever. So again, at the beginning of this budget season, it's always, I guess, when we maintain those line items, we try to maintain them over, historically, what's that average? So I, I'd say that's where that number comes from.
It would be especially, it seems, in, important for the, since the closest event in the calendar is the, is the family fun day, that, that potentially.
They, they will need to, uh, raise enough funds for, that's the next year's budget, which is included. Whatever, right, if whatever the money that they had budget or allocated towards officers for that, or details for that, uh.
So we're okay for this family fun day?
No, anything up, anything up to, uh, June.
Anything after July first, well, when's the, when's the actual?
Yeah, that was the end of June.
Okay, I'm sorry, if it's.
Depending on the date.
Depending on the date, right, Tony.
Okay.
If it's after that.
I don't know the date, and July fourth is a Friday, isn't it?
I'm not sure.
So.
What day is today?
I'm with you.
Yeah.
So I, I will work with the celebration committee in terms of that.
If you could just get us the date on that anyways, but essentially.
Eventually there'll be a notice, I'm sure, you know, fourth of July is a Friday.
Which obviously, oh, okay. Anything else from the board?
Well, Mr. Chairman, can we get into the issue of, of the, uh, the water rescue?
Uh, we're gonna go into that, right now, we're, we're working on.
I did, well, in, as much as it, it, Animators, certainly talking about eliminating.
We can do it now.
Yeah, but fire training.
Yes, that's why I thought of.
So, if you recall, the, what the fire chief described to you was, under the salary line item, he'd always carry certain amount of money for training. In order that so many years period, that the, that number has dwindled to the fact they're not providing train. You basically have salary money in there now for people to go and show up at fire, right? And then maybe a little bit, maybe for periodic training. But you don't have enough money in the salary budget to regularly train for these special operations, as he deems them. So therefore, we can't advertise or make claims, uh, when applying for grants or doing other things, that we actually have these things, because we don't have training to continue these things. Um, dive team underwater support, high angle confined space trench rescue, swift water rescue, et cetera. So those are all special operations that, again, we have on-call firemen, we have one full-time fire chief. So all of these trainings are done by folks who have other full-time jobs, um, and, uh, they get paid for, when they attend trainings. Uh, after they've been hired as a firefighter, recall, they have to go through three hundred of fi- hours of training unpaid first to become a firefighter. Um, but he can't continue to make claims and offer these services to maybe other towns, because he's not gonna be able to maintain the funding to train people to maintain these train, these levels of expertise. These are special above and beyond showing up at a fire.
But where does, but I don't see where that, that training, this, this thirty thousand was gonna be an, an additional one day per month, correct?
Right, when he, when he made his presentation here, he was, he was basically pleading and saying that, in order for me to maintain and continue to operating these things, we don't have enough money in our training budget. We talked about services and services, what are we providing, what do we wanna do, what do we have? These are one of the things that, when he was describing, in order to maintain and continue with these things, this, this is one of, this is the funding that he would need to do it. So, you know, maybe Bo's a better firefighter than, than is an expert than I am, certainly, but I think what he's saying is, he has training to have people, his people, you know, attend enough trainings to maintain their firefighter one or firefighter two. Whatever, but he doesn't have training to offer above and beyond that to people. And we've had, had that in the past, where we've had these things. And I think we, we still, we still have offered them, but we don't have enough money in the budget to maintain them, that was the whole point of his presentation.
The only thing I don't, I don't agree with, because once you learn this stuff, okay? And I went through all these, except the dive team, is the only thing I didn't do. Um, you don't just forget these things, okay? And his little thing here says, we will go and assist and wait till qualified personnel arrives. Well, if it's a trench rescue, okay, somebody, God forbid, get in a trench, okay? You're gonna stand up there and watch somebody until somebody else comes from another town, I don't think so, okay? And if that's the way he, he, he reads this, well, guess what, maybe we better, you know, do something, because you're not gonna just go there and stand there and wait till somebody qualifies. When we have enough guys that have been through the training, and gr- granted, you do forget things, but you still have the basic training in your head. And there's no way that I would go there and someone's in a trench and stay there until somebody else shows up.
I think what he's, I think what he's trying to say is, just like myself, I have a certification, just like the treasurer has a certification, just like the accounting has a certification. If you wanna say you're a certified person, and I'm certified to perform a certain activity, if you, you have to get a certain number of hours every year to maintain that certification. What he's saying is, he doesn't have enough training to maintain certifications for certain people and certain things. If it came to a life and death matter, is the guy going in there and grabbing it? And then, but is there a potential liability for us there, that he's concerned about? Because we're doing an activity that we're not certified to do?
You don't get nothing written that says when you go through the confined training. I went through that, I went through the high angle training, and every, you don't get a certificate that's, that you have to.
Does he mean, how about for new firefighters?
Uh, we haven't had the, most of them been.
We just hired two new recruits.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that, those people, but normally, I mean, everybody else has been through all these courses.
Well, I, I tell you what, I can't answer, I'm not an expert in terms of firefighting, I'm not an expert in terms of.
I just agree with that.
Confined space rescue and other things, so I think what he was trying to do is to notify me, just like he notified me before about this, the, the turnout gear. Adam, just letting you know, we have thirty sets of turnout gear, twenty of them expired ten years ago. I'll continue using them, because that's all I have, but I want you to be on notice, and I'm covering my department. If you recall, there's a couple of neighboring towns that went through issues by not maintaining certifications and, and other things, and they had lots of issues, and didn't get a favorable report. He wants to make sure he knows, you know, in order to do certain things, in order to be maintained certified, in order to have proper turnout gear, I'm letting you know I don't have it. I'm letting you know I need funding for it, so if you come to me in five years and say, why, I didn't ask for it, and yell at me and say, I don't want you anymore, he's, you know, I think there's part of, part of that. Um, but again, he, he only has a certain limited budget. And you, and, and what he has to do is, he's gonna have to make the, the decision in terms of what he's gonna use for, what he has to maintain for putting out fires, and what he has to maintain for training and professional development. It all, it's, he doesn't have a line item for professional development, like, uh, say, uh, the library has. They have professional development, that's sixty dollars per class to go to attend a class. You know, this is for people who are getting paid by the hour, you know, eleven dollars to come in and go to a training, they get paid when they go to a training. That's over and above the amount that's in that budget line item for actually putting out fires, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chairman, I mean, uh, I respect everyone's feedback, but we're making assumptions on, on the guy's email. So would it be possible if, on the next workshop, would workshop be more appropriate? That we ask the chief to come forward and explain some of this to us, so we, we're well informed as to what he's getting at?
I agree a hundred percent, Tony, because that was my next question, is, we could beat this up, but the guy that wrote this has no idea to answer it.
No, maybe there's new certification or something, but, you know, who knows? Uh, so let him come and explain it, and we could, you could ask the appropriate questions at that time.
In, in the meantime, though, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm reluctant to see equipment get redistributed or notify towns that we, we can't help, when, when, when we still have questions about this. Um, about this, you know, statement he wants to make, maybe hold off.
Well, I think, here's what, here's what, I think what he's trying to say is that, you know, from a, from a, from a regional aspect, from a mutual aid standpoint, okay? It's like canine unit, all right? Uh, just, you know, you may have to, not everyone has one, so, but every, all the other towns wanna know who has access to one, right? So what he's saying is, just because I have a guy who's done it in the past, he's not trained and certified, you should be calling a town that has a guy who's trained and certified to be a canine, you know, I'm just using the police example in canine, just because I have an officer who's on board, who's done canine ten years ago, and was trained ten years ago. Uh, but doesn't have a certification to operate that, uh, a canine and show up with his, his dog. Um, you, you know, we want you low, we don't have that service, you need to call a town of X to get that service. But I think that's what he's trying to say, is, I, I don't have, I'm, in the future, I'm not gonna have certain certifications, so if something happens, you need to call town Y. Because they have it certified, they have trained, they have a dive team, that's, you know, they have a full-time fire department that has that training or certification. I think that's what he's trying to say about in terms of notifying other towns. You know? He's not gonna advertise, hey, I've got this service, when he doesn't have anyone certified to do it.
I agree, go ahead.
The only thing I'm saying is, last week, these guys were all ready to go. Now this week, they're not?
That's not what you're saying.
Or that's more or less, because we were doing this up till last week.
Well, why don't we have him, why don't we have him come in and clarify?
Exactly.
Can we have him hold off at any official communication to neighboring towns?
I can do that.
I know this is an upset of your normal procedure, but if, I, um, if you're determining how departments that have been cut impact public service, and you need information on that, then I need to have a discussion with you as well.
Yeah, and we'll get to that, Billy, when we get to, uh, citizens are important, I'll let you speak at that point, okay? But, but.
Well, here's what I'm gonna say, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, in terms of, I don't, I mean, it's up to you, I don't have a problem with Bill talking about it now, um.
Well, I do, because we're gonna put this to bed first.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Okay, I'm not gonna move on to something else, because to me, this is important.
Yeah, well, what I, what I'm saying is, there's no scissors for him on the agenda, so did you mean scissors for him at the next meeting?
No, I'd let him speak tonight, but I'm just saying, at this point, uh, and, and I gotta be honest with you, I don't like the way this was written.
Gotcha, so why don't I, why don't we, at the next meeting, I'll have him come in on Monday.
And I understand where it came from, and we all know this was coming, guys, this is nothing new.
Right.
But I'd like the chief to be able to explain.
Yep.
Where he's coming from, because we can all make second guesses here, but we better have our answers and know where we're going.
This one here in the bottom.
On the hours you're talking?
Yeah, on her, why she, you know, there's no reduction on her pay.
She, well, what he's saying is, she's only twenty-two, or whatever, twenty-four hours a week, which he's, what he's saying is, we're gonna do those Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, she's, she's gonna be there longer on those days instead of being a four hours she normally works?
So they can try to free up.
This person also serves as a part-time dispatcher.
Yeah, but only on weekends.
Just saying.
And, and again.
She's been doing this for the last several years, why are we changing her schedule?
You can ask community committee.
And that's why he's gotta come in, though, okay? We don't have the answers and hopefully.
I don't like the.
Well, what, I guess what my, my point is, when he comes in, or whatever, whether the hours are eight AM to two, or whether they're ten to four, or whether they're nine to one. At the end of the day, they're not gonna be, she's, it's not a full-time position. Okay, so, um, you know, what we try to do with part-time people, as everyone knows, look at Mr. Rock, you know, I try to adjust his, you have a qualified person that's been there doing the position. They may have things in their life, based on their part-time, he may be shift hours or whatever, shift days, whatever, because you only have, you have forty hours that, that you could be open, but you only have twenty-four as a service. We try to fit those twenty-four in the forty. So I don't know the personal situation over there, you can answer that question over there, but it's not uncommon, that we will take someone who's part-time hours, that can't work forty, and we will shift them from, instead of nine to one, they're gonna work ten to two. Whatever, that's, happens all the time, and that's, under my purview, as a town administrator, we'll set those hours in that form. Because you have to be, when you have part-time people, you have to be flexible.
And the same with him, he's only doing inspections one day a week, I mean, you know, you know.
Well, again, again.
Again, it's gonna be times, it's gonna be closed, I know what he's, what he's saying is, you know, in order to maximize the amount of time the hours are open, I'm gonna do inspections on, on this particular day. You know, one of the reasons for that is, he just, there's no interaction with town hall on the other day, so he can be in the office as much as possible, right? You know what I'm saying?
I know, I know what you're saying, but I don't agree with it.
Well, I will say this, I would say that as a department head, which he is, he runs his office, uh.
If he chooses doing inspection on a Friday, instead of a Wednesday, it's completely up to him, that's not us.
That's my question, and we, that we, we have strong chief form of government.
Right.
So we, our, we don't have purview over, of the way he organizes his department.
We don't, we can't go in and tell the police chief, who's a strong chief, that, you know, we don't like this guy, you're gonna change his shift, that he runs his department. The chief runs his, and, and it's up to him to.
Yeah, but he's only running himself.
Well, no, you just questioned his assistant, so.
That's who you brought up, the assistant that's under.
I mean, so I'm saying that's his prerogative to do what he feels is right, to get the coverage he needs, doesn't mean we're not gonna invite him.
Well, here's what, here's what, I think he's, one of the things he's trying to do, and again, I'm, I'm making assumptions, or, or even, I'm trying to explain this probably more than I have to, but if there's no one at town, think about the oppo, the times that the assistant up there interacts with town hall. She does vouchers, she does payroll, well, why the heck would we have her work Thursday if town hall is closed on Thursday? I think that, you know what I mean, let's put all of her hours on the three days that town hall is, is open, and those are the days that she has the ability to interact with people when they're in the office. You know what I'm saying?
She doesn't, I mean, you're, you're into.
I mean, you got, yeah, I mean, to me, this is.
You've got fire things, you've got a lot of stuff that she doesn't have to do with the town hall, that you're limiting the people to three days a week.
What we're not gonna do is, not get in a situation, I don't wanna get in a situation, no, I mean, disrespect, we're not getting in a situation where one building is open on Tuesday, and another opens on Wednesday, and another one's open on Thursday, and they all have, you know, the idea is to maximize the amount of time that these offices do interact with each other, that are open at the same time, the person's in the office.
Will they call up to say hello to each other?
Well, they might, but that's, that's neither here nor there, because we're not gonna solve this tonight, and we can go back and forth. I will tell you this, that they work for you.
That's, at the end of the day.
At the end of the day, it falls on you to make this work.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we all knew this was coming, so there's no surprises, yes, this is.
I mean, if we're, I mean, we got bigger fish to fry.
We could have argued over this three months ago, or two months ago.
On Thursday, or nine o'clock on Wednesday, I mean.
So, I mean, and, and we will ask the chief to join us, you'll handle that, Adam. But we're not gonna solve that tonight. Are we done with that one for right now? Mr. Shamath, if you'd like to come up, please. And you know the routine, just for the record, because we're going out of sequence here.
Bill Shamath, co-chairman of the Park and Recreation Commission. And I did speak with Adam at length earlier today, and had, uh, indicated that, uh, a couple of major concerns about how we deal with the not being able to fund the lifeguards. Uh, number one concern was to make sure that, uh, the police, uh, as Adam indicated, would still be able to, uh, it would still be willing to drive down through, uh, because all I could envision was, uh, no staff, road blocked off, trashed beach facilities, a- after, uh, a lot of community effort went into, uh, particularly the handicap, uh, ramp down at the beach. Uh, so, um, Adam's assured me that the police will still be able to, uh, drive through. Um, it's important for grant purposes, uh, to note that the beach is not the only thing that the public takes advantage of at Luther Hill Park. We have the disc golf course that was donated by the Lions Club, we have the, uh, beach volleyball net next to the, uh, skateboard park and the skateboard park. Uh, so one could park at the skateboard park and still get to all of those activities. So you could, there's, there's one gate at, uh, Lake St-, we've always kept the Park Street gate closed in, in recent years. Um, the, there's one gate at Lake Street entrance, and then there's one further in by the skateboard park. So you could have the gate at the skateboard park area locked, locked, you could have the Park Street gate locked, but people could still access the skateboard park, the beach volleyball and the gi- disc golf course, but not be able to drive down to the beach. Um, uh, and that should improve, uh, uh, allow us to apply for grants, not for the beach, but for the park. And I didn't, number one, I wanted to make sure we deter vandalism as much as possible by having the police continue to go through, because we're not paying a lot of police officers at this point. And, and secondly, that we didn't shoot ourselves in the foot in terms of applying for grants for the physical facilities at Luther Hill Park. I think, I think, uh, Adam, that we've, we've been able to resolve those issues. The public needs to realize that this is the first time in fifty years or more, that, uh, we don't have lifeguard personnel at Luther Hill Park. And these aren't nice extras, these, the, these, I mean, in your chart, you always rate public safety as no, as, as your top priority. And frankly, gentlemen, uh, pub, uh, lifeguards are public safety personnel, even though they happen to be paid by the Parks Department. Uh, so i- i- in some area down the road, if you're looking to, i- if the state happens to give more money, or funds eventually become available, and you look to some priority of restoring services, I urge you not to consider this in the low, almost never get funded rec in, in, in culture area, but consider the lifeguard personnel portion of the budget, and this, and them being able to teach the life-saving skill of swimming lessons as a public safety item. And, and in that regard, I need to, through you, let the public know that we have mechanisms that, I don't think for this summer, but potentially if businesses or foundations or public individuals choose to step forward, that we have a revolving fund that can pay the salaries. That's authorized every year at town meeting, we have a Luther Hill Park donation account, if they're concerned about the maintenance at, uh, O'Gara Park. or Powder Mill, or Bemis Proudey, or Ralph Warren, or the Rail Trail, that we have, uh, both a revolving fund, and what's known as the Youth Commission Donation Account, which is our catch-all donation account. We have all the mechanisms in place that the public can step up and say, we want to donate our money for these services. And gentlemen, I was not just re-elected as a park commissioner to throw my hands up and say, oh, well, so, before I came to see you, I personally took a hundred dollars out of my money and made a donation to the Luther Hill Park Donation Account, and my parents matched it. And I challenge all the members of the public to step forward who care about these services and these facilities, and choose one of those accounts a- a- and to do the same. And if they indicate in their communication to the, to, they make their check out to the Town of Spencer, and they indicate what facility they're interested in, the town hall staff here can make sure it gets put in the correct account, to be able to, hopefully sometime in the future, we begin to restore those facilities or those, those services. So, uh, we're not just sitting by and throwing our hands up, we had, we had set the mechanisms up, a- and now is my desire to urge the public to say, I need you to step forward, and as an elected official, I put my money where my mouth is. Uh, in regard to the little bit of money we do have, we had prior discussions prior to the vote, and our priority as a park commission is Ogara Park. We have, uh, agreements that we get some funding, and we allow the youth football, which has a large number of, uh, young people from Spencer, uh, adults, uh, for the men's and women's softball leagues, uh, we have various other groups that pay a fee to use Ogara Park, and then we usually go half on the porta potty with them, and in the case of the softball, in the case of the football, they provide one, we provide another. And then we need to maintain this field, and that would be, without the use of lifeguards, the largest facility that would get the most use. So that is where our, our funds have to be prioritized towards. Therefore, I need to let the public know that, uh, given we have to prioritize Ogara, and we only have five thousand eight hundred dollars, that that means that we can't afford to the, the, uh, luxury currently of putting a porta potty at Powder Mill. If people wanna donate to that, or some group or business wants to sponsor that, and then we can reinstate that service, we're certainly happy to look at that. But I needed to let the board know, and let the public know, that, uh, with the, uh, very limited resources we have, that was the priority of, of the commission. And, um, and you, you have a right to know that. And furthermore, I also know that the vote was a, a very close one, and that, uh, out of that percentage, thirty-some odd people were so torn, that they didn't make a decision yes or no, and if those people had voted yes, you would have had a nine vote, uh, you would have lost by nine votes. So, given that there is an election in September for a primary and a general election in November, we certainly want you to not close your mind to the thought that, um, i- it's worth, uh, requesting all or part of the funds that we lost at, uh, a question on one of those ballots, you're already, you wouldn't be repaying the election workers, because they have to be there for the primary election or the general, so it would be the cost of whatever printing the extra ballot is. And I, I can't speak for the other departments that were cut, but I'm sure they, they would very much like the, the same opportunity. And I certainly did everything I could to communicate before that, and hoping to continue to do that, and hoping that the public, by seeing the very fact that, we're not kidding, the services aren't there, may be sufficient to change the balance on that, on the town services question. So, I would urge you, in, but not only regard to parks, but in regard to library, fire department, council on aging, don't make any decisions that are irreversible. Uh, for example, selling Maple Street School would be irreversible, because then the senior center could never be located there. And i- it's possible, once the public sees that, yeah, the money isn't there, we, we, we're serious, and they actually see it, that could be enough to tip the balance.
I think we're looking at all that, Billy, and I appreciate your comments, I just think, you know, a- and you're right, that's why we have the revolving account set up, and that's why we did, that's why it all got up there, unfortunately, you know, we're still dealing with this sixty-one thousand dollar cut, and, and you're right, we have to, you know, you and I had conversations about Ogara recently, so I, I understand that, but I do appreciate it, Billy, I'm glad you kicked in, I only hope other people realize it. These are what decisions we have to make unfortunately tonight, you know, at least talk about, it's not good, it's never good.
And I just want the public to know that at least the park commission isn't, isn't walking while you're throwing your hands up, even with the almost impossible situation we're handed. We're gonna do the best I can to try and get those services restored through whatever mechanism is available to us, and whatever advocacy we can advocate to you gentlemen,
Let us know.
in, on the town meeting or the public.
I have a quick question for you, Bill, through the chair, um, as far as maintenance is, are we gonna be seeing, uh, because of the priority list of, of the parks, we're gonna see one of these parks like Powder Mill, you know, there'll be no maintenance done to the, the facilities down there, the, the amusement center, the grass, the, we're, we're gonna see a change there?
Yes, there's no funds for replacing anything unless.
Unless someone volunteer goes down there.
Someone volunteers, or, or some group or business, or a group of individuals donates funds to replace that, we have the ability to accept the donations and then use those funds. But, uh, with five thousand dollars, the best we can do is say that, with, with, uh, no use, no lifeguards at Luther Hill, biggest use of our facilities is, then becomes Ogara, where we do have groups who pay us some money, and we ha- we have to be able to maintain those, those agreements and keep our commitments.
So of the five thousand, you have a fifty-eight hundred, it's, off the top of your head, you remember the line, like line items, but most of that's going towards Ogara?
Most of it's going towards Ogara, I mean, if there's some emergency, we, I assume we have the ability to adjust.
I mean, you have the ability, they have an expense, which is fifty-eight hundred, and they, at the beginning of the year, you propose certain line items, where that fifty-eight hundred.
But they can adjust.
Eight hundred, that's order for that, three hundred for that, but at the end of the day, they can spend the fifty-eight hundred in any way they want, and choose.
Right.
So, I mean, the, the commission had had discussions, and Ogara has to be our priority.
So in other words, the highway's not gonna be mowing these things, is that what you're telling me?
No, 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 no. I don't control the.
We're talking about maintenance and term of fertilization.
I'm saying the fifty-eight hundred dollars the park commission has is dedicated to Ogara.
You were talking about Bemis Park, the highways always mowed that, we always mow Ogara.
I don't.
No, not Ogara, we always mow Powder Mill.
Yeah.
And Warren and all that, as far as I know, that's not changing, right?
That's not changing, but what he's saying, they had expense money in their budget, so if fence needed, uh, repair, they would take it out of their money, if they, you know, certain other things and expenses that they have.
The salaries to pay the highway guys to, to mow the things isn't a.
The labor is not an issue.
Okay, I see.
Uh, in terms of mowing.
I, I use that term, it was.
That's what kinda confused me a little bit today, so.
No, it's, it's to do.
But you won't see fertilization, you won't see.
You won't see, uh, what we put down, uh, under the swing set, yeah.
If something gets vandalized, and ore breaks down, and needs to be repaired.
The lawnmower.
We don't have funds to, to deal with that, so.
Rail trail maintenance, I'm, you know, I'm sure that'll be affected.
It, it's, it takes.
Their expense budget went from like twenty-nine to five, I mean.
Right, so the, the, the long list of capital items, or smaller capital items you see for us are gonna continue. Uh, just because we didn't get the lifeguard funding doesn't mean that when you have town meetings, we're not gonna be requesting that you fund those things, and fund them more often. Uh, because, uh, we're never gonna be able to compete with the police department, or the highway department, or the fire department, but the fact is, is that if, you need to be equitable and provide whatever you feel you can afford to fund out of those items on whatever priority you establish, that, uh.
My point, Bill, was that I, I don't think the public realizes the, the, the reach of the, of the parks, and what it will, what it could affect, um, you know, I'm sure people make assumptions that it's Luther Hill Park and Powder Mill and, and Ogara, but, you know.
It's, it's the rail trail, it's Bemis, it's Proudey where the, uh, veteran ceremonies are held, it's Ralph Warren. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Okay. I think it's, uh, that's for station update.
Well, point with that, you wanna go over just the process for this?
You wanna go back over that?
For Spencer's, for we just hold district, because that process is not over.
Oh, I, I think it's the beginning of what we went through last year.
Correct, so just, just a refresher, Chris wasn't here, just a reminder to the public, so, based on the fact that the assessment was not approved for the, their, therefore their budget's not approved, okay? So they have thirty days, um, to meet and go over their budget, they have the opportunity to amend it, keep it the same, ask for more, whatever. And then, once they vote on that within that thirty days, then they have seven days to get it to us, they can ask for a fifteen-day extension from the Department of Education. Once we receive that, we would then schedule a special town meeting, I think it's within forty-five days, um, would do less than that, it only takes two weeks to schedule a special. Um, and then there'd be an article on the, on that special town meeting for the assessment, probably similar to what you saw at the town meeting, at the annual town meeting. If it's more, obviously, you know, similar, a similar number, or somewhere between zero and that number, or even higher, it, most likely would be drafted, again, contingent upon an override, which means we'd have to wait for the result of that, um, special town meeting, schedule another election, last year, I think it was in September, and if it failed then, then the school has the oppo, school district has the opportunity of doing a district-wide meeting, last year that was in October. Again, that failed as well, due to the fact that school committee didn't affirm the vote that took place at the district-wide meeting, and then the Department of Education would come in before December first. As a reminder, so, that part of the, that part of the budget for the Town of Spencer is not yet complete, and based on the outcome of that, could have another impact in terms of how this operating budget looks for FY fourteen, I mean FY fifteen, and moving forward. So right now, the only thing on this that I'm gonna do in terms of an action, is I'm gonna ask the fire chief to come in and explain the impact of the training.
Yeah, if you could just.
But everything else.
Ask him not to notify anybody unless.
Is there anything else on here? Because I need to notify staff, I have to issue layoff notices, I have a lot of work to do between now and June, and June thirtieth, so, um, this is my plan. If you think otherwise and wanna talk about that, we can have an open discussion, but this is what I'm moving forward with.
Well, we, we are, in, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're committed to this.
Absolutely, John, you're, you're, you're saying what I was just about to say, I thought, I think, if you look at, even on the number, maybe, you know, again, seven dollars off in one, two seventy-four in another, um, you know, and again, I, I might have to live with the numbers on the left anyway, so, the middle column was just, you know, once I did the actual calculation per number, the numbers on the left is basically just around it, and keep it even, you know, ten thousand rather than ten thousand and one, you know? Um, so that's what we're, we're moving forward with, again, it, we're doing what we say, and we're saying what we're, what we meant, so.
That is your task.
Okay, so that's what's gonna happen. So transfer station update, if you recall, there was a discussion, Mr. Fritz, under the board liaison reports, mentioned there was a, you know, a, a meeting to discuss the last ditch effort from We Care to make some proposed changes, uh, put a copy of their memo, um, or essentially a summary of their meeting, uh, between Steve, who's here tonight, and also John and Steve McNamara, and Bo and Gary, to discuss, um, how, it wasn't apples for apples, um, it was discussing some different, different ways of doing things, um, Steve asked him to come, just to kinda give a summary in terms of what they were looking to do. Um, we've obviously already started to implement things, um, so Steve can have a discussion on that, and then, if there's anything else you'd like to discuss in terms of the transfer station, whether it's about this or not, we can do that tonight as well.
Good evening, so the first page is similar to the copy you already have, the following page is a little bit of backup I worked out earlier today, to try to be able to compare what We Care, uh, proposed versus what, um, I guess I would describe as discussed and laid out as the approved budget for fiscal year fifteen. So the meeting with We Care really was initiated with a request for them to give us a price proposal for hauling trash only. We tried to, um, get that from them over a two or three-month period, and they finally came in and, and met, uh, with Bo and myself at the water department after one of our water commission meetings, and presented this short noted outline, which I had to jot notes on to try to clarify what I think the full intent was. Um, so, their proposal was to, uh, keep the staff that they have there now under their, uh, purview, and that way they could keep them employed, and assign them to other locations, that way they could, you know, still work in Spencer, have their experience in Spencer, um, and still be full-time employees and be, you know, get the benefits and so forth from We Care.
But only two days a week in Spencer?
Yes, they would, they would, yes, for only two days a week in Spencer.
So the reduction.
They would have, the reduction in hours would be as the budget proposed, um, but through this, the advantage, the advantage of this method to Spencer would be that someone else is managing the facility, and we have the experience of people that have been running it for many years. Uh, Richie and Ann in particular, assuming they stayed with We Care through this process. You know, the concern is, is will, will full, currently full-time employees be willing to switch to part-time employees, um, and still feel like they can raise a family and, and have a home and so forth. So, their basic fee was one hundred and four thousand dollars per year, and then they outlined, um, wh- what their costs for other items would be, and the one hundred and four thousand per year is for the two people on-site at all open hours and all truck hauls for trash, so that's what's included in the one hundred and four thousand. What I did for comparison purposes, that the next two pages are basically the, the fiscal year fifteen budget as proposed, and, um, what I did was I added a line at the bottom for the grand total. Uh, the fiscal year fifteen budget was three hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars in total, and then I took that budget and, um, filled it in and changed it according to what We Care's numbers were. So, We Care was basically proposing to eliminate all staff and just having those two people, um, only at the property, and so that's the way I worked it up. You know, and I, I think logistically, with the things going on, I'm not sure if two is quite enough, um, given the, that you only be open two days a week, and there'd be a lot of activities ongoing, ongoing all at the same time, where some form of input or monitoring would likely be required. But nonetheless, I still worked out the budget in that regard. I had to make some assumptions with regard to the number of, uh, halls for, uh, single stream recycling and for the cardboard. I felt comfortable that I knew it was over one, um, probably less than, over one time per week, and probably less than two times per week. So I used, um, a one point five times per week, just to see where that would fall, see if I wanted to tweak it one way or another. And I really didn't really feel comfortable tweaking it up or down, because I, it's not a number that I, we haven't worked this way, so I don't know what the number w- would be. Um, I feel like the cardboard is a close number, um, so I think hand in hand, the single stream's probably gonna go with that. So, just to go to the bottom line, uh, using the We Care proposal, the, the new grand total would be three hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, which is basically just under thirteen thousand greater than what we had proposed in the fiscal year fifteen town budget. Um, I do like some of the benefits of the We Care proposal and We Care operating it, but I think fiscally and everything we went through, budget-wise, and where we ground our numbers down and sharpen our pencils to get to the point to where we are, um, and not being real comfortable with this one point five times per week number, the number could actually go up greater than this three hundred and forty-four thousand, I guess it is potential that it could go slightly lower. But I don't think it would go lower enough to get down to thirteen thousand dollar difference, um, which would, if you just look at those numbers, you just see that you, you just can't get to that point, unless you use an unreasonably number of hall, of, unreasonably low number of halls per week. So, I think, um, it's just a matter of presenting the numbers and, and I, I don't have reason to recommend a change from what we proposed in the budget to begin with, the fiscal year fifteen budget. So, uh, I think that answers any questions with regards to the, the We Care, uh, proposal, and, um, if there are any more, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So, their latest and greatest proposal, compared to what we were paying and where to go now, what's the difference?
It went from about a hundred and forty down to a hundred and four, so they reduced, they, they did reduce it, but they didn't reduce it by a third, they reduced it by, um, somewhere in the twenty-seven percent range. I think if they had reduced it by a third, the numbers might have fallen a little closer, or a lot closer.
They working longer hours those two days, so it wasn't a complete third reduction, just because we eliminated a day, they go from like nine hours to ten?
And that's where I'm going with this, is, is, you know, I mean, it's no secret, and I've said it a hundred times, these people are not my heroes. They, they've, uh, reaped every benefit there was, and when Bo and I looked at this, and correct me, Mr. Fritz, if I'm wrong, but the hauling we had pretty much down to a science, I thought, on the number. I just don't see where these people are all of a sudden your heroes again, that's all I'm saying, is, is, you know, you eliminated a day, so that gives them the reduction there, and I understand trying to keep the people and whatever, but it seems to me like after we make decisions on this, we're back to ground zero again. Just my comments. Any questions from the board?
Well, you, you got the thing from Casella?
I gave it back to you, you're gonna make me a copy after.
You gave me a copy of that, and I'm looking at that, and it says on here two hundred dollar haul fee, now is that minus the fuel fee that they've been charging us right along? When we looked at this before, Steve, the, the haul fee was like three hundred and sixty bucks per haul, not two hundred.
The, um.
Cause they had the surge.
The answer to your question, um, uh, Mr. Fritz is, I did ask that question point blank and I haven't gotten an answer yet, but I did write it into the contract that that's it. It's a two hundred dollar fee, that's the way I understand it.
The last bill we got that we looked at, it was a hundred and sixty dollars.
It was for construction every, it was two hundred dollars plus the surge charges.
Yeah, and that was for the fuel charge, up and beyond.
Yes.
The thing.
The, the, the way the agreement is written, I can't answer definitively because Casella hasn't answered my question, I did ask them, and they have not responded to that question. I asked it in a way to where I'm assum- I s- basically I left the question on a message and said, I'm assuming that this is the case unless you tell me otherwise.
Because we asked We Care that night, and I did, and I asked them if that two hundred fee was everything, and he said yes.
Yes.
So.
Steve's writing his contract set up such that that two hundred includes the fuel.
It's the number, right?
Yes.
That's what he's doing.
And that's hauling recycling, that's hauling trash, that's hauling.
It's not trash.
That's for the, just the single stream recycling.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, and so the, the way that agreement is written, and I have a copy here, I do have enough if, if you'd like for me to share it with you, the agreement is written to where it's two hundred dollars per haul and there's no additional.
Fees above it.
Fees, and I've listed out, no, no fuel, no enviro, no whatever, or no fees of any other kind.
They agreed to that?
No, they haven't answered the question.
So I thought, we're gonna get them to agree to it.
I'm not sure that I'm gonna get them to agree to it.
So that price you had for three thirty-one couldn't go up, correct?
That.
If that, if they charge those other extra fees.
Yes, that is true, um, it could also go up if we don't get a, uh, trash hauling for the three hundred dollars per haul. This is definitive, uh, contract locked in place.
Right, man, you give us an answer.
So the, the, and it is hard dealing with these, I'm not sure the one's any better than the other as far as being responsive.
Exactly, you'll get, I've called a hundred times and I never get a call back, and it's always somebody else I've talked to, I've never talked to the same person twice, you know? So, I don't know, I mean, these are okay, they're, they're estimated figures on both of them, they're not set in concrete. The only thing we did get was a bid for hauling the trailers.
Right.
And that's set, you know, at three hundred dollars a haul.
Right.
But We Care did not wanna do that, they wanted to give for the whole thing, they didn't wanna give just the tractor haul.
That's included in the one oh four.
Right, but, but they didn't, they wouldn't come out with exactly what the price was because they didn't break it down, and I asked them to, and they said no.
And when I met with We Care initially before they submitted this proposal, I s- I said, it basically was start with the question, are you interested in giving us a hauling trash fee, and the answer was yes. And then when I met with them before we met with them.
Yeah.
I said, if, and they had all these ideas, I said, you can come back with proposals for whatever ideas that you have, whatever you wanna give me a proposal for, we will look at and we will review it, see if it's in our interest, but we want a proposal for hauling trash all by itself.
And they're not interested in just that, obviously.
They're not interested in that, apparently.
That, that's, Mr. Chairman, it's amazing, after they've feasted upon us for how many years, you know, just the fact that they've gone down twenty-seven percent just shows you, uh, and this is no reflection on you, Steve, so don't take this, or, you know, anyone in town personally, but they've just taken advantage of, of this town.
Twenty-seven percent is a result of the, of a reduction from a day.
Right, it's not like you, and, and that's my hangup with this thing.
It's not like, before you had service acts, now you have service acts and they just cut off twenty-seven percent.
It's not, it's not apples to apples, this is a change.
They wouldn't break it down.
The number of trash hauls would be about the same, so.
That's a frustration.
What, what your differences is the, is the labor reduction.
Correct, correct, correct.
I mean, I agree with you, Gary, they're, they're not my favorite organization, so.
Man, I just, I don't know, I, I guess, uh.
And the only thi- other thing is, on this contract with Casella, it says down here that we have to, the town have to provide this second compact.
And, and that's insurance, so I was not too many.
But that's another expense which is not in there either.
It is not in the annual budget, 'cause it is a, it is not, is a, um, a capital expense.
And I believe in.
We do have a grant right now that would pay for about half of a compact.
Right, you're gonna see a new, uh, compact, even a used rebuilt one, is I wanna say close to thirty grand, correct?
Uh, no, uh, the kind of contract, uh, compact that they were looking for, new is a, is, should be under fifteen or close to fifteen thousand.
We have a grant through DEP for half of that.
We have a grant for DEP for seventy-five hundred. You could get, you could get a refurbished one for seven or, or like seven to nine thousand dollars, but you can't use the DEP grant for that. Grant has to be a new one.
Which gets us back to where we were in the beginning, if we're gonna do this, we don't wanna do it twice, we wanna take one shot, and, and a new one at under fifteen is gonna outlast probably one that's refurbished. And, and you have a grant that you're using that's gonna cover most of it with the cost savings, if we projected this outright, if we projected it outright, okay, is, that should be able to hold its own, because, believe me, if it can't, and, and we don't get through this next budget process, we're in trouble again, so.
It all depends on what happened, when the price went up on the bags, and I've noticed that less and less people, like, I was down there every day, pretty much when the dump was there, and it was slow, it was down, even Saturday was, was slow down there, wasn't like it normally is on a Saturday, so we did lose because the bags went up, and I know of about five people on my own street that now have these little containers out in their front yards, which didn't happen before, so I don't know how that's gonna work on a tonnage.
We'll find out. Never know where we're going.
Any other questions?
I just need to step backwards to have to re- re- return to those numbers that we worked, you know, so hard, uh, and, and it's a bit, it's infuriating that, that, that that after all those years of their service, that they couldn't meet us with, you meet our requests for, you know, items in a, in a, in a, in a budget that, in lines that we laid out. We should stay the course on what we originally. Chairman, again, this subject always starts to make my head spin, where are we at with RFPs for the hauling? I mean, have we got bid, I mean.
I got one bid on the hauling, it's for three hundred.
We had more than one bid, though.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that's what I'm saying.
But we got one for the three hundred we originally, and he's, gave a proposal to Steve, I believe.
I, um.
He dropped it off at the water department, I know he did.
Is that, um, Bruce?
No.
McKissick?
No.
That's the only proposal I have in hand, I don't know that I have the other one.
I know we dropped it off down at the.
Yes, yes, we have the one from Dustin Doray Trucking for three hundred dollars per week.
Yeah.
And then the second one I have is from the McKissick for the, which is five hundred dollars a week. Yeah, that's what we have, two proposals.
That, that was another question I had, Mr. Chairman, where, where we, are we seeing a trend with stickers and B, uh, most of the trend with the bags and, and your, your, your gut check too as far as what you're seeing down there? But we've, when will we know hard numbers on our trend on?
From my perspective and the numbers I see, I can't, I don't think I can go one way or another, because the thing with the bags is there was a rush on to buy them when they were at the lower price.
Right.
Right.
So, I would expect there to be a lull at the higher price. And then, um, the stickers, you know, your sticker's still good till June thirtieth.
Right.
We've sold, um, we're up in the hundreds, we've sold about eight hundred or so stickers, so, um.
I think we sold like eighteen hundred last year, roughly.
Yeah, yes, um.
Pretty good.
Talking about forty-five days, I mean.
The, um.
Forty-five days.
Well, we set up selling them after July too, we sell them all the way until January of next year.
Right.
Um, but obviously not quite so many after you get past July first, but, um.
Do a Saturday sale too?
I can look at that a month, and we.
Do a Saturday sale?
Haven't had our Saturday sales yet.
Interesting to keep an eye on that, see where we're going, that go into whatever future analysis is in operation, we gotta keep looking at.
Well, we may have to make a decision come December first based on that data.
Right.
At that point, we may be.
And that's kinda like what I see, I think, you know, everything is changing wholesale, it's not like we're changing one thing or the other and able to predict it, and we're just gonna have to take the numbers as they come in and, and, and I'm maybe back before you for one reason or another, just depending on how this, how Casella's contract works out or one other contract works out or, or doesn't work out.
Which we should get clarification on that, if you can't get hold of them, we'll roust them again.
Yep, I'll, I'll, I'll pursue that with them this week, again.
Yes, Steve, thank you, continuing to put this together for us.
Try to stop you from doing all this.
We, we have a signed contract with Casella, we're, we're clear on the, the terms going forward, or is that?
It's not a signed contract yet.
Not a signed contract yet.
That's what we're working towards, so.
All right.
But this is just update, I said, and We Care happened to come back in and adjust the numbers based on being closed one more day.
I, I think, um, that might be my question, is just looking for a direction of if I should be trying to move forward with signing the Casella contract, which I was planning on doing, this We Care thing coming in the way it did with an unexpected approach, I just gotta put a little pause on that.
I think that's your only option at this point.
Right, I think it's still the same direction we started with.
I think there was a determination from the board to pursue that.
Yeah, it is still.
In February.
Unless the board has other options, but.
That's the plan.
Okay. So, yeah, after this meeting and talking about this subject, uh, I will push back on the Casella and try to get this thing under.
Okay.
And, and can pen.
Thanks, Steve.
Come in.
Good luck. To us all.
For sure. Do we have anything else?
It's not an agenda, maybe we'll do, well. Do you wanna make anything to add as a next position?
Yeah, we had loose conversations, I had loose conversation with the administrator, how we go forward with what, what our partners, uh, in this, uh, school committee have to, have to accomplish, and, and, uh, talking with the administrator, there was some, I, you know, some ideas that came up, and I was wondering if the chair would allow, the administrator to put something on the agenda surrounding that topic.
We talked about drafting a letter to other towns, um, so maybe, uh, next, next week, uh, on the Wednesday, we have a, I mean, maybe go over a draft letter, but, and we start talking about how, what the actual tasks would look like, and I think that we should have a discussion next week in terms of like an, an implementation plan, just sending a letter, then, then what, what's the next step, after we get a letter and we get contact names and we're interested in talking, but then what? In terms of what other process would be, so I think we should, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll put it on the agenda for next Wednesday, uh, discussion regarding chapter swimming formula, working with other towns in terms of addressing the impacts on towns, maybe brainstorm some ideas of actually what the tat, next step would be after we sent the letter, 'cause I know what's gonna happen, as soon as I send out a letter, I'm gonna get fifty calls and like, okay, now what? What do you, what are your thoughts, what do you wanna do with this, you know? So I think it should be more than just, oh, I just wanna get a collection of names, it should be, we wanna get a collection of names because we wanna do AVNC.
Yeah, and I think by far that's gotta be our next option anyways.
So why don't we, I'll put that on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, we were talking about additional forms of communication to keep this in the, in the spotlight, and our concerns for these towns.
Very important, certainly. That being said, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Fritz for, uh, working with me Sunday, he worked harder than I did. We got the gym set out at Maple Street all loosened up. I spent Friday in the rain, Bo told me, get away from it, so, Sunday he went up and we finished it, it's ready to be moved, so hopefully that will be out of there, so, thank you, Mr. Fritz, for that.
See him go real easy by saying, hey, when are you gonna move that stuff, uh, to the schools?
I can't tell you his comments.
It's not fit for television.
There is nothing else, I will.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
A motion, do I have a second?